United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Heather, would you take a roll, please?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Forward to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered to be by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding next study session, consideration of the Run the Pier 5K run walk to be held on Saturday, August 12th, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second. Any discussion? Heather, could you just please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, the presentation of 91-99 Arthur Street Development, Jason and Mary J., sorry if I destroyed that, Tillman and James Brody.
Maria, actually.
Okay, I knew I was gonna get it wrong.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good, good. My name is Chef Jason Tillman. My wife's name is Maria Tillman. It's M-A-R-I-J, so it's J is silent. And I'm here to present a new project on 91-99 Arthur Street. On Zoom call right now is James Brody from Crate 3 Architecture, and he is gonna start us. James, are you there?
I am, yes.
So I'm gonna turn this over at this point right now to James and let him kinda go through the photos and a little bit of what's gonna happen and what the vision is. And then, once he kinda goes through that, then I can go back and kinda talk about it, if that's okay.
For sure.
And Mayor, if I may, before they get started, they're looking for an Oprah. No actions required tonight. We just wanted to bring this before council. They were looking at the study session on the 14th, but they weren't available for that, so it's just kind of a preliminary. There is a possibility about this being a permitted use depending on some things, but it still has to go through planning and zoning. But appreciate their time showing it to us.
Thank you.
James, take it away.
Yeah, do you have the... My name's James Brody from Crate 3 Architecture. I'm down in Grand Rapids right now. I sent up a presentation this afternoon. I don't know if anyone received that.
It's up right now.
It's up. We're on the first slide. I just, we're on the first slide.
Oh, okay. Let me, let me get to it on my computer so I can kinda follow along. Okay, so the first slide just shows an aerial view, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with. Just to the north of the site is the SS City of Milwaukee. And currently, there is a smaller restaurant that used to be a Little Caesar's Pizza. And then, in between the SS City of Milwaukee and the current restaurant, there's some campers, a campground there that kinda goes out into a little point into the lake. If you go to the second slide, I just did a few shots of the existing building, if anyone's not familiar with what it looks like. But it is, if you just roll through second, number, the second slide, all the way through number six, shows the exterior of the building and then the interior of the building. It's pretty distressed, rundown, overgrown on the outside, and actually, it doesn't have any siding on the two sides and the rear and part of the front as well. If you go to slide number seven... Just let me know when you get there.
Yep, we're there. I'm going along with you as you talk.
Okay. This is the new floor plan that we're proposing. We're using the existing plan of the building, and you can see in the lower left-hand corner of the plan there, there's a square that you see some non-shaded walls. That is the existing building. And that's gonna become one large commercial kitchen, and it's gonna take the, made into a men's room. And then, we have a wing that goes off to the northwest, and that will be a new bar, a vestibule, and a sitting area. And then, the area that extends to the lake is the Three Seasons Room. And then, we'll have a porch out on the back that has, that square is gonna be a fireplace, a fire pit.
Now we get to reveal, now we get to reveal the beauty shot. Here comes the shot. This is what everybody wants to see.
Yeah.
So that shot right there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in real quick, James. So this shot, when you're coming in, and I've been coming to Manistee for the last, well, since I was 10. I have property, my brother was a schoolteacher here, and I have property out off of Udel Hills Road. And so, I'm very, very fond of Manistee. I love it. I've been come, like I said, I've been coming here since I was a kid. And so, you know, the opportunity to be able to be involved in a project like this is very dear to me and to my heart. And so, as you're coming into Manistee from that way, from Myers, as you come up the hill, you'll start to crest over top, and you'll pass the Spirit of St. Louis or Spirit of Milwaukee, St. Milwaukee, and you'll see this. And it's just gonna, it's just gonna be gorgeous. So, sorry, go ahead, James. I just had to say that. I get excited.
The existing building is over on the right. It shares part of the Lakeshore Social sign. And if you remember that circular window that was in that little bump out on the existing, the existing building is over on the right. We just have that light wood, that beach color that goes over it. And then, the idea is to provide a mural. We just chose a sunset here, but Chef Tillman wants to potentially hire someone from Manistee to develop a mural here along the existing facade. And then, we, when designing this, I had been involved in some of the planning portion with Ken Armor on the Iron Works Building. And so, I've been up and back and forth to Manistee for about four to five years now. And the city just reminds me somewhat, I was born and raised in metropolitan Detroit, and they seem like cousins. And there's a grit that Manistee has that I wanted to show in this building. And we used kind of a rust panel to show, to give tribute to the iron works and even the manufacturing and the logging industry, to give some of the history back in the building itself. So if you go down to the, you know, continue to go down to the next slide, it goes around the building and all the way to the lakefront, which would have a patio. It would have clear stories that the sunset would shine through there and kind of illuminate that. Also, for when the patio is not being used in the winter months, there's enough space in there for folks to have, come to the bar and eat in the space. Yeah, so I don't, if you wanna thumb through those, the remaining renderings there, it kinda shows what our thoughts are for the building.
So those, those are the photos. Can you leave one of them up so I can... Yeah, that's just gorgeous. So, you know, looking at the front, like James was saying, if we could get, you know, somebody local to potentially do, you know, even seasonal renderings on the mural, I think is so much fun. You know, I feel like, you know, the style of food, you know, just real quick, a little bit about me. I've been, I've been in the culinary business for the last 30 years. It's all, it's all I've ever done. So, you know, Singapore, Indonesia, Malaysia, Japan, I've worked in New York City for 17 years at some of the best restaurants in the world, from Le Serre to Danielle to Union Square Cafe. I've been on Iron Chef America, Chop, to ABC, NBC, C, and all of that, you know, which doesn't mean anything. What means, and what's important to me, is having an opportunity to be able to come home to a place that's very familiar to me and very special to my heart, and be able to create and do my craft for people that I really feel are gonna appreciate it and enjoy it. And I feel like there's a really big need for it. Looking at the space, it looks, oh my goodness, is it gonna be expensive? Is it gonna be too much? But absolutely not. You know, I've been coming to Manistee my whole life, so it's about quality, it's about value, and it's about having a good time. I mean, the sign says Lakeshore, but I think it's Lakeside Social is the name, and it's gonna be everything what you would think. It's about having a good time in an environment that's fun and comfortable and approachable. You know, we have big portions, we have a comfortable environment, there's an inside fireplace that's a real wood-burning fireplace. That, when you're looking at that photo, that, right by the front porch, that's a fire pit. So that fire pit will signify us being open or closed. So when the fireplace is lit, we're open, and when it's not lit, we're closed. There'll be an adjacent fire pit on the other side on the patio and then the real fireplace inside. So it's gonna, it's gonna create a warm and comfortable feel in a great environment. I mean, you know, Manistee has a lot to offer, and I feel like it's a great place for something like Lakeside Social, so I'm very, very excited about it and very passionate. When it comes to the food, you know, we're gonna be open three meal berries, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. But instead of just doing a standard breakfast, we're gonna do brunch, because brunch is more fun than lunch. So, I mean, we'll have brunch for most every day, all day, and we will cater breakfast as well, but why not do brunch? I mean, it's a lot more fun and it's more interesting than just lunch. It's not gonna be overly priced, it's gonna be approachable on the price, and it's gonna really be able to be a place that you'll be able to come to, you know, not as a once-in-a-while or an anniversary or a special event restaurant. It's an everyday, like, you know, we're setting it up for future. So we have a lot of plans, you know, on the other side as well, outside of the patio, that we're gonna put in some beach volleyball courts and put in a stage so we can have some live music and really kinda create an environment that's gonna be fun and draw people from not only Manistee, but, you know, from other places around the state as well. So that's it, that's the dream, that's the vision, that's the goal. So at this point, if you have any questions for me.
It's a beautiful building. It's stunning. Are there hurdles to getting a liquor license for this? What's the status of that kind of project?
I do believe that the liquor license has already been acquired through 91-99 Arthur through the LLC.
Okay, perfect.
I thought I, oh, I'm sorry.
Ah, just run my mouth, don't worry about it.
I thought I had read in some of the documentation that you were gonna have some boat docks out there.
Yep.
Have you... I haven't been out there in a long time. I do remember showing that property, because it used to be a real estate.
Yep.
But I remember it was quite shallow there, so I was wondering how deep it was.
To be honest with you, I'm not 100% on how deep it is, but I do know that we were talking with the team today and going ahead with going through the right stages and right processes to go through any of the permitting and anything that has to do with that, we are in the process of working on in terms of getting that all situated, because we do wanna have docks out there as well, for sure.
Okay, yeah. It's just stuck in my mind from...
Yep.
I think we were throwing rocks in there and other things. Seating capacity for the restaurant?
The seating inside is gonna be, between the inside area, you're looking at 15 at the bar, 15 to 20 seats around, it's gonna be an oval bar all the way around. And then, separating the bar and the dining space is that fireplace. So that fireplace will act as a wood-burning fireplace for actual heat and to separate those two rooms, but you'll have 15 to 20 at the bar and roughly 40 in the dining room. So you'll have roughly 60 in the off-season, you know. So, I mean, we all know that, you know, Manistee becomes pretty seasonal in the summertime and in the wintertime. But, you know, I'm excited about, probably more excited for the off-season than the actual season, you know what I mean? So I really wanna do a lot of specials and a lot of outreach and a lot of fun things for the off-season, because I feel like in order for us to be successful and for this to work, we need our local community to support us, and that's the biggest thing. And so, my main goal is to support them first. You know, they're here year-round, and I feel like we need to support them first. I mean, you know, we always call them Flatlanders, right? So when they're coming up, you know, they're gonna come up anyways during the summertime. Not that we don't wanna treat them, you know, poorly, but at the end of the day, I feel I wanna be a little bit more special to our local, you know, residents.
Chef Tillman.
Yep.
What will your role be in this?
I'll be day-to-day operations. Day-to-day operations. My wife and I will be day-to-day operations as we staff, as we, you know, everybody says training. I don't, I don't train people. I train my dog. I educate people. So, you know, as we're educating our staff and really bringing them in to try to, I mean, this is gonna not only be a phenomenal business, I feel like it's gonna be a phenomenal opportunity to change some lives of people here local. You know, we're really, I mean, with what I have to offer, I don't feel like it's, it's, it's not something that I, that I, I feel like it's my responsibility to give back. And as, you know, as a chef, with the knowledge that I have and where I've been, I wanna really be able to find some people who are into culinary and really, you know, give back and train or educate and bring people up, because it's a great career, and it's brought me to a lot of places around the world, and I feel like I can help other people with that as well. So, yeah, I'll be hands-on.
Do you have a particular cuisine that's gonna be happening, or will it change and vary?
I think it's gonna change. I mean, it's, it's, my personal, like my, if I was to label myself of what kind of chef I am, I'm a seasonal modern American chef. So seasonal is, we know seasonal cuisine is seasonal, you know, the four seasons. Modern is, you know, not more foo-foo or gastro pub style, but in my mind, modern is, you know, catering to your clientele, gluten-free, vegan, vegetarian. I'm not putting vegan and vegetarians on the menu as an afterthought. They will be well-thought-out, well-planned dishes that will be able to be staples that people will get used to and wanna come for. So, you know, if you have a meat person or a fish person or whoever you have with your dining group, you're something for everybody. And it's not just, oh, I threw a bunch of vegetables on the plate for whoever that vegan or vegetarian may or may not be. It's a well-thought-out orchestrated dish, you know? And then, when you talk about, you know, American, American cuisine is what? I mean, we're an adaptation of everything else on the planet. We're so, we're such a young country, so it could be anything from an Asian flair to, you know, a Latin flair to barbecue. I mean, but it's still, American is that adaptation of everything else. So that's kind of the way it is. I wanna, I wanna create, I like to create a template on my menus that will have a certain amount of items, and then those items will change. So you're always gonna say, maybe I can get a chicken, but what is he gonna do with the chicken this season? Like, how is he gonna make it different? And obviously, we're at Manistee, so, you know, in the fall, juniper berries and venison, you know what I mean? You know, between me being over there at the restaurant or at the shack is a different story, but, you know, it's gonna be seasonal modern American, you know?
I think it's absolutely beautiful. I hope all of this comes through, and I hope that it kind of makes some of the surrounding buildings wanna step it up a little bit and make their buildings look better.
Absolutely.
Because this is absolutely beautiful.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think it, you know, I just, I look at it, and I just have these grand visions of just what it can do for the community and the location of where it is. I mean, we're, that's Lake Michigan, essentially. So not only, you know, for every other business in the town, if we can get some of that, you know, down south, Chicago, boating people who, you know, if they have boats that are gonna be able to dock in that area and come in, they're gonna have money. So they're gonna wanna spend it, and they're not just gonna spend it there. They're gonna spend it everywhere else in the community and be able to help everybody else. So, yeah.
Time for you.
I'm hoping August. That's where, you know, I mean, thank goodness, we haven't had a crazy winter, so as soon as we get, you know, all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted and everything and get into construction, I think it'll move pretty quickly.
Do you have any sketches of where the parking will be?
We do. I know, James, are you still on?
I think you...
I am. Yeah, do you have that rendering of the, can you put up that rendering of...
Let me see if I can.
We do. The parking will be in the front of the building.
Okay.
So we've kind of designed that parking to kind of be away or more central to the building to try to keep it in the middle and as far away from the spirit of, I don't know, the big ship. It's funny, my brother got married on that boat, his first marriage, so I should know it. But we have it, so it's located, you know, as far away from that and as far away from...
James, do you have something that you could share your screen?
Yeah, as far away from the condos for noise. I mean, essentially, and everything is designed to filter that sound away from those areas so that we can make sure that we're being very neighborly and being good to both sides, you know?
Perfect. Yes, I was concerned about the condos.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the whole thing. We, you know, we, you know, we haven't yet, but we're gonna reach out to those, to those both sides. I know we've reached out to the Spirit of, I don't know why I always say Spirit of St. Louis, but we've reached out to the Spirit of Wisconsin, and they're great people, they're on board, they're phenomenal on, you know, on our team. But we definitely will reach out to the condo association as well.
James, did you have something you could share your screen with?
I can, yeah, let me see if I can pull it up.
But it's all about being neighborly. You know, we want, we wanna create an environment that is friendly and that is, you know, that works both for, works well for both sides. I mean, obviously, we wanna stay within the rules, I mean, we're gonna follow the rules. I mean, if the city ordinance says this, we're gonna do the city ordinance. We're gonna park, the city ordinance said that, we wanna make sure that we are doing, you know, what we're supposed to do and we're, you know, able to still run a business and be able to provide that for them, too. I mean, now they get a great place to walk down and have breakfast, lunch, and dinner and not have to cook, and they don't even have to get, they don't have to get a car, it's perfect. But, you know, also doing some stuff with the hotel across the street, I mean, some of those hotels, they don't offer food, so there's a lot of opportunity for everybody to win, you know, in that area.
Does this property qualify for brownfield at all?
I think it could.
It could, but they're not asking for one at this point, they're just asking for an Oprah.
How many people do you anticipate hiring to staff?
I think it's gonna, it'll fluctuate. You know, it's definitely gonna fluctuate during the summer months and through the wintertime, but I think there has to be probably a full-time staff of, well, I mean, hopefully, if all goes well, you know, I want a full-time staff of 10 at least during the winter, which is two bartenders at least, you know, a couple people back in the kitchen, a dishwasher, me, obviously, my wife is involved, she's the ginger part of Chef and Ginger, and so, you know, but as we get into the season, I mean, you're looking at triple that at least, especially with, you know, holidays and then the events and stuff that happens during the summertime and the Fourth of July and all of those, those bigger, those bigger events, you're gonna need a lot of extra staff. But, you know, I think if we can, if we can permanently employ 10, you know, and that's, you know, a kitchen manager, there's gonna be a front-of-house manager, there'll be, you know what I mean, I think that that will be good. And I, and I know, with the help of the community and the help and the support of everybody, being able to be busy enough to do that, I think, is definitely doable.
Any questions?
I agree. The place looks amazing.
Thank you.
As well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get some more information about the parking. It should go through planning first anyway for those details, so thank you very much.
He's got a picture right here for you to see.
Oh, there it is, right there. Beautiful. That's, yeah.
Subject to change, but...
So the parking will be on that, yeah, on that backside.
Okay.
Yep.
It looks pretty cool.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I really appreciate it, and thank you again. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Consideration of Budget Amendment 2023-1 for fiscal year end June 30th, 2023. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that the actual expenditures do not exceed budget amounts over the course of the current fiscal year. Unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with those events to ensure compliance with the state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to adopt Budget Amendment 2023-1 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Question? Heather, could you take a roll, please?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 645. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 645 and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute an agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Or...
Discussion? Heather, could you just please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Lucas Richardson from the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission.
Lucas.
I don't know why I was...
I know. It's okay.
I'll try to make mine as exciting as chef, but I don't know if I can get that high. So, as Heather said, and, I'm sorry, as Mayor Sullivan said, presenting on the annual report for the NRBC. So our purpose of the NRBC, as stated by Chapter 275 of the city ordinance, the commission shall be put together to identify, research, and recommend opportunities, resources to help prevent, remediate, and eliminate blight and help beautify the city of Manistee. We don't particularly have any role in blight enforcement. Our commission is put together between Chief Glass, City Manistee, and then Mary Dilworth as the recording secretary as of right now, myself as chair, Mayor Sullivan as vice-chair, Kelly Greavy, Mayor Kay Woolokosh, and Catherine Grabowski, who's here tonight. Summary of our commission's duties, just briefly, to identify and implement strategies related to restoration and beautification of neighborhoods, recommending activities, programs, policies, fees, and funding sources relevant to the beautification and restoration of the neighborhoods, and to organize a community service day once annually, and to maintain a list of volunteers to facilitate those volunteer efforts annually. So since inception, last year, March 1st of 2022, council created the ordinance and adopted the ordinance in March. April 5th, council appointed the members to NRBC, including Mayor Sullivan. In April, we had our first meeting as a commission, and shortly after, about a month later, we toured the city to kinda get a holistic view of where blight concerns were and areas that we might be able to help beautify. And then, not too long after, we had our first annual community service day. So some accomplishments in 2022, we worked with city staff and continued to work on increasing the notification of the single bulk item pickup, which I think has really helped reduce some of that junk that's been on the curbside. We developed a, a good list of volunteers, uh, from combination from the Big Day of Serving that, um, I was a part of, uh, Manistee Proud, and then just some of the commission members, uh, friends and family. Um, we hope to continue to grow on that and, um, basically make that as big as we can. We identified some limited funding opportunities for home repairs. Um, there's not a whole lot out there, but, um, there, there are a couple of funding sources that we identified for low-income owners. Uh, we targeted residents in need of assistance for the service day. We try not to, um, target, or, I don't want to say we don't want to assist everybody. We, we try to assist the people who aren't going to take advantage of, of the assistance, um, those who absolutely need somebody to help. Um, we organized the first community service day last year, and I thought it was pretty successful. I think everybody on the commission thought so as well. Uh, we provided two homeowners with those funding resources that we found through, uh, rural development and even assisted them filling out the applications. Unfortunately, they did not receive them because they didn't qualify based on income. Um, but we did try. We did try to, uh, get some home repairs done for them or assist them with them. Uh, we beautified the walkway near the old Pine Street Terrace Park, the, down First Street Hill where the retaining wall is and clearing the sidewalk. As, uh, city manager, uh, Bill Gamble really enjoyed helping. Uh, we cleared brush in front of two properties. There's one that was so overgrown that the mail carriers couldn't even walk on the sidewalk and deliver mail at the front porch. Um, and then assisted one homeowner with, uh, minor blight in their yard and we, we helped some landscaping and she had some, um, difficulties from COVID, uh, with her family. So, um, and then just limited assistance with the Blight Remediation Grant application, uh, city manager and city staff. So here are some photos from the Community Service Day. Uh, as you can see on the top left of the screen, there's, uh, there's a little bit of dirt that was covering what was accessible through there, but there's about an 18-inch path that was cleared before and, and we were able to clear all that. And there's about three feet of, uh, overgrown roots and, and leaves and debris that took about four hours to remove from, I think there's eight of us. Um, and then obviously the retaining wall there, we, we cleaned that and the sidewalk in, in preparation for possibly some discussion on, uh, putting a mural there in the future, but, uh, we're not really decided on what we're going to do there yet. And then here are some more photos from that Community Service Day and, uh, I wish some of the volunteered, I think, uh, we got a couple here tonight, but wish all of them were here tonight to say thank you again for volunteering, but this is just some of the landscaping work that we did. So in 2023, uh, our commission members, uh, discussed in previous meetings what their individual goals would be, um, to try to accomplish as a commission. Uh, firstly, we, we need to establish some bylaws. We need to create them and approve them and get them in front of, uh, city council. Um, we want to continue to educate the residents of the bulk item pickup and for, uh, potential funding opportunities every time, uh, we can, we can find them and, and fit them appropriately to those residents. Uh, we want to develop a program for inquiring for our assistance. Um, we think that a lot of people could probably use some volunteer assistance, um, and that goes with probably the Manistee Proud, uh, activities as well, but they might not know that we even exist. Recently, the See Click Fix, uh, application's been launched and I think that, that would be really beneficial for the community to even know that that's there, um, especially for some blight issues and even beautification things that, that can be addressed and if they don't know who to contact. We obviously need to, just because it's, not just because, but we're in, uh, in our ordinance, we have to do the annual service day, so we need to organize another successful one. Uh, we want to promote residents to volunteer for that service day and, and in other groups. Um, educate residents about the city ordinances that exist, and I think one of them is on the next study session. Um, but we need to just educate first before we keep enforcing because we're going to have a recurring problem. Um, noxious weeds, blight and sidewalks, those all kind of pertain to this commission's goals. Um, the next, uh, a really recent one that we've been talking about is to create and advertise a, a community survey to get the city resident input, so that way we can fulfill what the community thinks we should. Um, and then most importantly probably is the, uh, reducing the workload off the police department, just because I know that they are very busy. Um, some success factors to, to make our goals work in, in this year, um, continued support from city council and city staff members, um, input from the community and collaboration between some of the volunteer organizations that already exist, uh, some of the commissions, the city commissions, identifying additional funding opportunities, and then, uh, also collaboration with, uh, Housing North. We met, uh, Tracy Davis in our, one of our recent meetings, which I believe she's going to be really beneficial and, uh, in some of the things that we're working on. So, that's it. Any questions?
One other comment I have is, you mentioned funding and the, um, sometimes maybe problematic to find a funding source to match the need. Just wondering, is there an opportunity, I, um, for citizens to make a donation to help out with that? If there was a resident who had an issue that they couldn't afford with, is that something that somebody can make a donation towards a project?
I, we haven't talked about it, but I, I don't know.
I think so.
There could be a donation to the city for a specific purpose.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering if, like, we could set that up and advertise it some way so people knew. You, you know what I mean? Because I think sometimes it's not necessarily that people don't want to. It's just they either can't afford to or they don't have the time or ability themselves. So somebody might be more than willing to make a donation, help somebody out.
Anybody else?
Okay, Lucas, you talk about, you have no role in blight enforcement. You talk about blight concerns. Blight remove, uh, grant apps. Don't you think you're in blight business?
We're, for sure. We're, we're assisting with the police department.
Right.
But we're not a part of the blight enforcement. That's the, the police department's job.
I think when you go into people's yards and cleaning up and all that, that's still blight, so.
Yep, we're, we're.
I agree with you. You know, I'm just asking a question.
I just wanted to make it clear that we're not going out and saying you have blight.
Uh, you don't give the tickets on that.
Yeah.
I know the city manager, I've talked to him about a house on Fifth Street that they've tried to issue court orders on to clean up and the guy's never said nothing, they've done nothing. And I know he's in jail. I was told he wasn't, but he is in jail. And is there any way we can clean that place up, Bill, or?
So there are a couple of issues with that property. I think there was a notice to the wrong individual and I think the order has expired, so it needs to go back to court. But, yeah, that is something I think the city attorney's working on.
Oh, I, I've had discussions, I think, and the officer was going to issue a new ticket on it, I believe.
But someplace down the road, can this blight commission get involved with that thing?
Well, uh, that's a voluntary thing, I think, for the property owner to accept or desire the assistance, uh, and if they did, absolutely. Uh, if not, it's something that the court order would authorize the city to contract for that work.
I just think if they could get involved, that'd be great.
A, a big thing that the commission's tried to veer away from too is the people that have the ability to clean up the blight and they're just not doing it. We're, so we're trying to assist the people that might not be able to mentally, physically or financially.
Right, and I think this would be one guy.
Okay.
I was just wondering, how do you establish that? How do you decide who you're gonna?
We're, we get the recommendation from the police department.
Oh, from the police, okay.
Now, do you contact the people when, you know, like this incident I'm talking about? Do you contact them if the?
No, that, it's all in Chief Glass and the sergeants.
Okay, they'd contact and, and recommend you?
Yep.
Okay.
Can bring up the, the Fifth Street one though, too. I can talk to him about that.
Anybody else? Thanks, Lucas.
Thank you.
Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Five minutes letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the managers' conference in Grand Rapids this last week. We had a session on EMS, on life support. Um, so it just made me realize how fortunate we are to have a fully-staffed fire department with paramedics and appreciate, uh, council approving the collective bargaining agreement tonight. Our DBW director has been working with the Visitors Bureau about additional signage during the detour. So that's in July, that's going to happen, well, after July 15th. When the signage goes up, it's looking like March, but we'll know more when the contractor has the pre-construction meeting. So we don't have more information at this time, but it looks like additional signage, working with the Visitors Bureau is going to happen. So I think that's a good partnership. Um, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Any others staff? Mr. Bachman?
Just one question. We're talking about blight. Um, city manager, is there a status on the property downtown? Are they in compliance or is the court case is done? And what's the scoop there?
Talking about the Gordon Resmerick buildings? I believe that one's completed at this point. I think I'll turn that over to city attorney.
Uh, y- y- yes. Um, the principal thing that we wanted to see was those boarded up windows, to be corrected.
They're in compliance now?
They are in compliance now. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I'm good. I was just going to say that, uh, I, I downloaded the app for See Click Fix and, um, I was just wondering if, uh, Jeff or Bill would want to give us a little, like, how does it work? So if somebody puts something in there, does it go, where does it go and how does that actually happen? I'm excited.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we, we did have it complete in December. We were kind of testing it out internally, but it, um, you know, it's set up service request base, so a citizen would go in there. If they saw graffiti, they could take a picture. Um, and then it's, you know, we have it set up to go to the actual department and responders in that department. So it'd come into their email, let them know there's a graffiti. Um, they can respond. Your request has been received. And then when it's closed out, they get a response. It also publicly displays that it's been completed as well. So there's a variety of items on there. We can add more, um, items as well. So I think it's, it's something we can kind of use. You know, if there's an, an NRBC request, we could add a category like that. So, um, we have some marketing items that were provided by, yeah, Civic Plus, so we'll be putting those out and just kind of getting the word out, get more people to use it.
Has, has there been a lot of people using it so far? Have you been?
Um, so there's been, there's been a few. Um, I wouldn't say, I think it's probably eight at this point, but we, it's early, but we're hoping more people download it and, um, I think it's very helpful in pothole season. They actually see a picture other than the left lane or the right lane, depending on which way you're traveling. It's helpful to see what it is. Um, and I think with blight too. I think it's going to be very useful.
So right now, it's just like, um, advertised on Facebook and on the website and?
Correct. Yeah, Facebook, website. And we got a nice story in the paper today, so.
Oh, okay. Good. I didn't see that yet.
Yeah, we can do a study session where we, we kind of show how it, how it's, how it works in the backend of it, so.
Okay.
I was excited. I thought you were going to say 80. You said eight.
Yeah, I know. It's not that.
Mr. Pratt, I'm going to get the word out myself, so yay.
Mr. Pratt?
Um, I just wanted to thank the Parks Commission and the museum for their, um, evening about the parks, the history of the parks. That went really well. I was pretty impressed with that and learned a lot of information. Um, at the most recent planning commission, I just wanted to thank the planning commission for listening to citizens' concerns. And there were a couple of concerns about streets that, um, I'm going to try to connect with Jeff about because some people said that they had some concerns about communication and conditions or potholes. Um, and then the last two things I had were, um, I was wondering if we can get an update on the clock downtown? Is that completely done yet? Is, are we still waiting?
I'm glad you asked. Um, we received all the parts about two weeks ago. Um, last week, the technician from the clock manufacturer contacted us and he was assigned. He's actually done work on St. Joe Church's clock and the big clock at, um, Crystal Mountain, so he's familiar with the community. He could be here as soon as next week, but his work is weather dependent, so he's just going to be looking at the weather, uh, forecasts. And as soon as he gets that window, he'll be here and it'll take a few days to do. So we're real close.
That's exciting. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff. Jeff, just wanted to say, I'm sorry to see your, your ice skating rink went to water. It was good for a couple of days when they could skate.
We, we finally got enough ice on it to safely allow people on it, um, a week ago Friday. So we got about 10 days. Um, every time I went by it, evenings, weekends, there were people out skating. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm, we're not putting it to bed yet, but the warm weather today certainly had an impact.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, is the run water notice still in effect?
So we had to make a call on that, um, at the end of January, uh, or at the beginning of January. Um, in order for us to do the run water, we credit back the people who run water for that extra water that they use, so they don't have to pay for that. That has to coincide with the billing cycle. So at the beginning of January, we had to make the decision to run water, anticipating we'd have really cold weather during February, um, which only happened for, what, a week? So, um, but I, I'm, can't see the future, or, you know, what's going to happen through the rest of the month. Um, so we'll, beginning of March, we'll look at it again, but we'll probably, it'll, it'll run at least through the end of the month here. Um, we've had one frozen service that wasn't on the list this winter, but there's hardly any frost in the ground whatsoever, so.
But you still want people to run their water?
We put that out as a courtesy, so if anybody's, if the people that were notified are at risk, some people have, their, their issue is in the crawl space or other, other places where they're susceptible. We don't diagnose exactly where, so if you're on the list, um, it, it's better to just run the water and, and, you know, be safer than sorry. Anybody else following here? Okay.
Did you have something?
I just had one more thing. Um, I was just wondering, in the past, um, I had talked to some people that previously sat on council, and it seems like maybe they got packets sooner. I'm just wondering, is there a reason that we get the packet on the Friday before the Tuesday? Or could we look at giving that out earlier if possible?
When did they say to, I think Friday's been the day when, since I've been here, but.
Some people claim that they used to get it a week before. I can't speak to that. I just know, like, for my school board packets, they get them a week before, which I think gives everybody ample time to ask questions or, uh, research some things. I'm just wondering if we could maybe get some more time on that end.
I can look into that. It would be restructuring quite a few things.
Okay. If not, it's fine. I just thought it might be worth asking.
Mr. Grabowski?
Okay. I don't know what to do. Do I have to adjourn before I read this?
Nope.
No, you just go ahead and, okay. Consideration of closed session, attorney-client privilege, communication, request to convene a closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, PA 267 of 1976 pursuant to MCL 15.2681H to discuss attorney-client privilege communications in an email from legal counsel dated January 31st, 2023. At this time, council could take action to proceed to closed session.
Make a motion?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
After you come out, you're just adjourned.
No, they used to come out Wednesday or Thursday. Yeah, I think it was Thursday. So it usually was the day before. I think it was Thursday. So. Jeff, can you hear me okay?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'm just making sure. Pause, so it's starting started again. Go back to the open session. And... Okay, so we are back in open session.
A motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Do you want these back?